The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees are now convened in a board work session on Thursday, December 9, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, December 13, 2021 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening. I believe Ryan Irving is here. Ryan, stand up, please. Thank you. The invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, Vision and Mission Statement, Recognizations, Board Comments, and Citizen Participation portions of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, December 13, 2021. We will begin this evening by administering the oath of office to our newly elected board members. Dr. Natalie Blessing-Game for position five. Scott Henry for position six. And Lucas Scanlon for position seven. Senator Paul Bettencourt will be administering the oath of office. Would the new board members please step down and stand before the podium?
Is everybody excited? It sounds like they are, Debbie. Okay, so that's, all right. There's a long history of having legislators do swearing ends, but it's just because we wrote ourselves into the code that we can do it, okay? But it's an honor to come up here because Cyfair is the third-largest school district in the state, not quite the country, but close. And importantly, what we teach the children here echoes through their entire lives. And we all have a lot of work to do because after COVID, everybody knows, the TEA just put out a note that they're worried, President and superintendent, that we could have lost over trillion dollars of economic growth because the children didn't get the opportunity they could have during COVID. And as my motto has always been to pass conservative solutions to Texas challenges, I know that this district and these three trustees are up to the task along with their compadres and the administration and because the 117,000 or so kids in the school district deserve nothing less. All right? So if y'all are ready to get started, you're going to have a job that pays less than a state legislature, which is very difficult to find in the state of Texas because we're down to 600 bucks a month, I mean, and you guys are at zero, okay? All ours does is pay insurance anyway. All right, so, all right. So if you're ready, raise your right hand. Do you, Dr. Natalie Blessing-Game, Scott Henry, and Lucas Scanlon solemnly swear to faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee of the Cyfair Independent School District and the State of Texas and will, to your best ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of Texas, the State of Texas, so help you God? You do? All right. By the authority invested in me as a state legislature under Code Section 602.006, just wanted to add that, for the State of Texas, I declare you sworn officers of the Cyfair Independent School District Board of Trustees. Let's give them a big hand. I yield to the better educators in the room at this point. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Bettencourt. And I would just like to add my congratulations to our new trustees on the school board and say the welcome and that I look forward to working with you. Glad to have you. Okay, before we proceed with the reorganization of the Board, we will hear public comments. Okay. Oh, absolutely, I forgot. Let's give you each a chance to introduce your families. Natalie, you want to go, Dr. Blessing-Game, you want to go first?
Thank you, Dr. Henry. My daughter just left to go to the Langham Creek volleyball banquet, and she wasn't an ugly sweater. I hope you got a catch, caught a little glimpse of that. But she's a wonderful young lady, and I'm very proud of her, and I'm very part of her school, Langham Creek. And I'd like to introduce my mother, Lorraine Kagan. And the rest left with the daughter.
Mr. Scanlon?
So I want to say hello to my wife, who has to be remote. She's out of state this evening, and so we had a pre-scheduled trip, and so she cannot be here. That's my daughter's seventh birthday, and so they're doing fun things at Disney World. So, hi, honey. But I want to say thank you to my wife and my family for supporting us as we went through this adventure together, and I love you all. Thank you, honey. Bye-bye.
Okay, Mr. Henry?
Yes, out in the audience is my wife of 29 years, which I love very much, and thank you for being here and supporting me during this campaign. And my mom is here as well. Thank you for making the trek over here. Thank you very much. And also my mother-in-law and her husband as well are here, so thank you for being here.
Very good, thank you. And again, welcome. Patrons who have duly registered per policy BED local may address the Board and make public comments on an agenda item during or before the Board's consideration of the item. The Board may allow public comment on agenda items at all meetings. The Board will continue with the remaining agenda after the registered patrons have had an opportunity to speak. The first person I have is Judy Dehan, is that correct? Okay, Judy, you have two minutes. You'll see the lights right there, and when it gets, I'll start it when you start speaking, and when it gets to yellow, you have 30 seconds left, so please begin to wrap up.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak this evening on the agenda item Campus Improvement Plans. The many supporters, volunteers, parents, teachers, and students want to welcome the new CFISD school board and express our gratitude for taking a stand for the children of Cyfair and their education. We are excited about the opportunities for us to collaboratively work together to put the children first in their education and hope that you will recognize the importance of the parent's role as the primary stakeholder. Our mutual objectives to remove the stigma of the resolution, refocus on academics of reading, writing, and arithmetic to ensure our children recover from the pandemic as quickly as possible, and increase transparency, inclusion, and communication with parents will be realized. We look forward to having direct access to the board members to share concerns and successes in the school district so that you may have firsthand knowledge in your decision-making. With the increased demands for other educational options, including more charter schools and private school funding, we want to collaboratively work together to return confidence to the parents of CFISD that we are a premier district providing educational excellence for all children. Congratulations, and our prayers are with you.
Next, we have Dr. Tara Cummings.
My name is Dr. Tara Cummings, and I am a parent. I was recently reviewing the proposed plans for Elementary School 57 to provide relief to Pope and Wells Elementary Schools. And I had some concerns, given that we have a number of Title I schools that are also in really great need of relief. And so I sent an email to the district asking how they determine when and where and what order relief is provided and new campuses and where they're put. And I want to express appreciation to Laura Lawless for her really prompt and incredibly thorough response to my email. It walked me through the entire process. It gave me a wealth of information that I didn't have before, and it really helped me get a better understanding. I still, though, have some ongoing concerns. In a previous meeting, student achievement data was reviewed, which indicated unequivocal gaps for students of color and other disadvantaged statuses. Dr. Henry at that time asserted that virtual learning was what accounted for those inequities, given that those students participated in virtual learning to a greater degree. While I agree that that is a very important factor, I don't think it tells the whole story. I wonder how our rezoning practices may inadvertently perpetuate or exacerbate multiple disparities that contribute to the achievement gaps that we currently have and that we will continue to have unless we make some important changes. So I want to urge the district to consider racial and economic factors and diversity on multiple levels in future rezoning and growth plans. And I also believe that the pending equity audit results may help us come to a really good understanding so that we can begin to remediate those concerns. And very quickly, I just want to greet our new board members. You guys campaigned on the fact that you're going to prioritize parents. As a parent who values public education and who wants to hold you all accountable, I am thrilled to hear that you want to hear from me, and I look forward to building relationships with all of you. Thank you.
Charlotte Lampy?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, and I want to congratulate all the three candidates for here. I'm so proud of each and every one of you. I also would like to salute the Cyfair community who came forward and really participated and stood up for what they believed in, in a really respectful way, and I really appreciate each and every one of you. One of the things that I came several months ago and I asked for a committee to be formulated, to get input on certain issues that were really critical to parents, I never heard from the Board and I never heard from anybody here. I hope that that does not happen again, and I'm making official request that we open communication, that we have a community input committee that addresses some concerns that people have and parents and taxpayers have for curriculum, for things that are being taught in our schools, and that we can share our concerns and be heard. God bless each and every one of you. Thank you very much saying that, and I really, really would like to wish you the best for all of you, and thank you for what you do.
Okay, that concludes our public comments. We will now move on with the reorganization of the Board. The election of officers for the 2021-2022 Cypress Fairbanks ISD Board of Trustees shall begin. In accordance with Texas Education Code 11.061(c) and Board Policy BDAA Local, nominations shall be accepted for the offices of President, Vice President, and Secretary. The offices will be elected in that order. I will serve as chair until a president is elected. At that time, the newly elected president shall preside over the election of the offices of Vice President and Secretary. Once each office is announced and the floor has been opened for nominations, any board member may place a name and nomination without being recognized. No second is required. After determining that no further names are to be placed in nominations, the chair will declare the nominations closed. Each nominee will be voted upon in the order that name was placed in nomination. All in favor will be asked to signify by raising their right hand. If a majority of those present and voting is achieved, no further votes for the office shall be taken. Sorry, I forgot to turn off. Let's see. If no majority is achieved, the next name placed in nomination shall be voted upon, and so on until the office is filled. Before we begin, are there any questions about the proceedings? Anyone have any questions? No? The floor is now open for the office of President of the Board of Trustees.
Madam President, I place my name, Thomas Jackson, for the position of President of the Board of CFISD.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay, Mr. President, will you please continue with the election of a Vice President?
The floor is now open for the office of Vice President of the Board of Trustees.
Mr. President, I'd like to put my name in for the office of Vice President for the Cypress Fairbanks ISD Board of Trustees.
And repeat your name for the record, please.
Julie Heinemann.
Thank you. Are there further nominations for the office of Vice President of the Board of Trustees?
Mr. President, I'd like to place the name of Natalie Blessing-Game in the position of Vice President.
The name of Natalie Blessing-Game has been placed in position. Are there further nominations for the office of Vice President of the Board of Trustees? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. The procedure for voting has already been identified and established, so all those who are in favor of Julie Heinemann, please raise your right hand. Julie Heinemann is now elected Vice President. The floor is now open for the office of Secretary of the Board of Trustees.
Mr. President, I, Gilbert Sarabia, sorry.
I will accept a nomination for the office of Secretary.
I, Gilbert Sarabia, would like to nominate myself for Secretary.
Are there further nominations for the office of Secretary of the Board of Trustees? Hearing none, the nominations are now closed. All in favor of Gilbert Sarabia, please signify for the office of Secretary of the Board of Trustees. Please signify by raising your right hand. The vote is, please raise again, one, two, three, four, five, in favor. Those opposed, please, by the same sign, a right hand. None opposed, two abstentions. We have now filled the officer positions. We will now take a 10-minute recess. Excellent. Our new Board will now start to work. Before we proceed with the action items portion of the agenda, I would like the viewing audience to know that each month during the board work session, the administration provides oral reports on various departments in addition to the reports outlined in the district's board monitoring system. The board monitoring system, a mechanism to measure the district's progress in achieving goals, may be viewed on our website under "Our District," "About CFISD," "Know Your District," "District Improvement Plan," "Goals." We will now review the following consensus action item. Nine, A. The Board will consider approving the minutes of the November 8, 2021 regular board meeting. This is on consensus. May we keep this on the consensus agenda? Thank you. Let us now move to the non-consensus items. Ten, A. The Board will consider approving the use of existing electronic signatures on all checks until the new plates for the Board of Trustees officers are received. No presentation. Are there any questions? Karen, if you would, please explain what this is about.
Certainly, Mr. Jackson. Basically, we have, it's the Board President and the Board Secretary that, through facsimile, sign all the checks, and so we have to get the new board officers' names. So until then, and we can submit it to the bank, and they change everything on the banking records, we still have paychecks and accounts payable checks to produce, so it's just approval until that time to keep the old board members' names on there and allow that to happen.
Very good, thank you. May we move this to the consent agenda? It's moved to the consent agenda. Ten, B. The Board will consider approving the administration's recommendation for the establishment of attendance boundaries for Elementary School Number 57 effective for the 2022-2023 school year. We have a brief presentation from Kristi Geron and Teresa Hall.
And Mr. President, before she begins, just a reminder, we covered this last month, but because we have three new trustees, we knew it would be important to get input and bring our new trustees up to date, so thus we're going to do the presentation again.
Thank you, sir.
Semi-brief. Good evening, everyone. On November the 4th, I presented a boundary proposal for Elementary 57. Since we have three new members on the Board tonight, I would like to review the entire proposal from last month and also share the community input that was collected during that time. I'd like to remind you, while no boundary decisions are easy, what is nice and simple about this proposal is that it only involves students that live in Bridgeland and that these students will still attend an elementary school in Bridgeland. You have my presentation in front of you. If at any time you need to stop me so that you can ask a question or get your bearings on the map, please don't hesitate to do so. The following people were on the committee. As you can see, there were representatives from Transportation, Special Programs, the Accountability Department, Curriculum, Assistant Superintendents over all three levels of school administration, and Associate Superintendent Teresa Hall. In addition to this list, we consulted with PASA for proposal. For those of you who are not familiar with PASA, PASA stands for Population and Survey Analysis. PASA assists our district in planning for long-range utilization of schools by projecting future student enrollment. Their input helps us know where we need future school sites and when. Here is a timeline that we would like to follow. So tonight, I will review the proposal, share and summarize the community input, and then share the committee's recommendation. Depending on any suggestions from the Board, we would like to make our final recommendation on Monday, December 13. Then on December 14, pending approval, we would post the final board-approved boundary Again, for review, the committee uses all of these considerations when looking at changing boundaries and populating the schools. Campus feeders, communities and neighborhoods, enrollment projections, geographical proximity of students to the schools, input from community, location of thoroughfares, creeks, easements, and other structures, minimizing changes, and school capacities. All right, so here we go. With the new faces on the Board, I thought it would be helpful to share some history. These next five slides will show the evolution or the need for Elementary 57. From slide to slide, I'd like you to notice the progression of Bridgeland and the Fry Road corridor. Warner Elementary opened in 2007 with 1,299 students. Wow. These were not the boundary lines in 2007, but just picture Warner having the majority of acreage in the far west middle portion of the district. In 2010, Renell opened with 821 students relieving Warner. This is the map for the 2012-13 school year. Warner had 1,587 students on the snapshot date in October. Lunchtime today, Wells was at 1,666 students. Until the fall of 2013, Warner was the only elementary school for all of Bridgeland. In the fall of 2013, we opened Pope Elementary with 964 students. This reduced Warner's enrollment to 945. Now Pope had all of Bridgeland. So Bridgeland is booming, and five years later, we opened Wells Elementary. But right before Wells opened, Pope was at almost 1,300 students. And as you can see, we basically split Bridgeland in half. That year, Pope had 779 students on snapshot, and Wells had 549. But as you can see on this map, Wells only had room to grow south, and grow it did. Am I on the right one? Yes, okay. In the fall of 2018, Warner was at 1,350, Wells was 738, and Pope was at 779. It was at that time that the committee decided to move all of Black Horse to Pope Elementary. Warner was well over capacity and growing. We realized Warner, we relieved Warner and better utilized Pope. By the way, these are still the existing lines today, but now look at the growth in the streets. I go back? Did I go back? No. See the difference between 1718 and then 1920? So here we are today, 2122 school year. Wells today is at 1,666, Pope is 1,115, and Warner is 1,194. Now that you have the history, I would like to review the proposal that I shared with the Board last month. This is what the committee started with. The top of the slide shows the current data. It has the building capacity, PASA's projected enrollment for the year for both schools, and then where they were on the snapshot date on 10/29. Both campuses have already exceeded PASA's projections. With this historical year that we've experienced with enrollment, this is awesome to us. The purple chart is from PASA and shows the projected resident students for these two campuses for the next five years. These numbers do not include transfers. These numbers reflect what enrollment would be at Wells and Pope if we were not building a new school and we did not make any program changes. Again, since both campuses have already exceeded these projections this year, you can realistically add 45 more kids to the enrollment at each consecutive year at Pope and around 100 for Wells for the next five years. Good news is, Elementary 57 will open in the fall of 2022 to relieve Wells Elementary. Currently, we have these special programs at the following elementary schools that are involved. Not every elementary school has every program. Typically, we try to place the program where the majority of the students reside. A little side note, Pope and Warner did not have pre-K until the school year 2021. Also, I want you to realize- Also, I want you to realize that without any special programs, look at Wells enrollment, it was 1,666 today. That is just K through 5. They don't really have any room for any special programs at this time. So right now, there's approximately a little over 100 students at Pope in pre-K, 35 from Pope, and 65 from Wells. Bilingual students for all three of these campuses currently attend Andre Elementary, and for the area of all of Bridgeland, that is 13 students. The building utilization map was produced by PASA in the spring of 2021 to help with the 21-22 projections and these boundaries. You can easily see, easily identify where the hotspots are, the Wells and Bridgeland area and in the southwest corner, which will receive relief the following year in the 23-24 school year. Wells actually is 153% today. This map shows the building utilization in 10 years if nothing is built. We received some community input, shared in the public comments, and emails with some concern for other campuses such as Walker and Hancock and as a result, as a result of this map. Keep in mind, this is what PASA projects the utilization to be in 10 years with no new schools. Our district typically uses a three-to-five-year chart because so much can happen in 10 years. Even when we are not opening a new school, we look at campuses that are overcrowded and/or underutilized. Pending new construction, we will offer relief when needed. A perfect example I shared earlier is when we, with Warner, when we moved Black Horse to Pope in 2019 to relieve Warner when we didn't build any schools. Here are our current elementary attendance zones. The red star reflects where Elementary 57 is under construction. In this picture, you can also see where Pope is located. Since the enrollment at Pope is stable and at an optimal utilization level, it made sense to the committee that the obvious lines for Elementary 57 needed to be in the Wells attendance zone only and be somewhere between those two schools. It is at the corner of Copper Breaks Crossing and Tuckerton. In November, we proposed at the yellow area on the right to attend Elementary 57. This was after digging through the data and looking at many different developments and different sections in Bridgeland. Here's a zoomed-in look. Hour too much? Okay. Oh, wow. Here's a zoomed-in look. The red outlined section within the Wells attendance boundary zone is the proposed zone for Elementary 57. We chose major, major roads and/or waterways to form the boundary lines. The red line between Wells and 57 is a line of waterways. Here's a detailed map of the developments that are included. We call this our res code map. I know res codes don't really mean anything to anybody but really us in our department, but for example, all of Bridgeland used to be res code 683. As neighborhoods are added and developed, we assigned a residential code to that area. It helps us separate data for all the students in an area that is growing in the event that we need to separate it again to populate another school. So for Elementary 57, our proposal was to pull three res code from Wells to populate Elementary 57. Res code 138, 535, and 238. I know that those are small, but you have them on your paper in front of you. Res code 138 includes Lakeland Heights, First Bend, and then two portions of Hidden Creek, which is Beach Creek and Cryer Creek. And there are 300, wait, yeah, 356 kids in res code 158, approximately. 138, sorry. And then in the middle, there's an apartment complex called Park Lane Cypress Apartments. And there are, that's res code 535, and there are approximately 45 students at that apartment complex. And then res code 238 is a lot of developments in there, and half of them are developed and half of them are not. But the list is right there. Do I need to read them all? There's 389 students approximately in that area. The top chart is, is a review of the current programs that I just went over at those three elementary schools. After consulting with the curriculum instruction team and with these proposed boundary lines, we recommend that Elementary 57 have the following programs. This shifts Wells ECSC and Wells pre-K from Pope Elementary to Elementary 57. Bilingual would still remain at Andre. We don't know those numbers, but if it were this year, it would be 66-ish students that were from Wells that are attending Pope. And they would now go to, if they have the same number of kids, it would now go to 57. With these recommendations, here are the numbers. The top purple chart is the current projections, again, with no program changes without Elementary 57. The chart at the bottom is the projected resident students for three elementary schools in Bridgeland with the recommended boundary changes and program changes. Many people noticed that Pope's enrollment decreased in the community input. This is due to moving the Wells pre-K students from Pope to now attending Elementary 57. Numbers for Pope and Number 57 are pretty balanced. You can see how balanced they will be next year and how steady Pope's enrollment continues to be and also the enrollment for Elementary 57. The continued enrollment growth at Wells will be addressed with the opening of Elementary 59, and I will discuss that when I go over the community input. Since November 4th, this is how we've informed the community of our proposal. School messenger and phone calls and emails, district and school newsletters, district and school websites, press release to local media, and the community input via CFISD website. From our website, as of today, we received approximately 200 responses referencing our proposal. There were three common themes, and on the following three slides, I'm going to summarize and address all of those concerns. Around 30% of the comments referenced this outlined yellow area. We're going to call that res code 138. It's the area of Lakeland Heights, First Bend, and two sections of the Hidden Creek, which is Beach Creek and Cryer Creek. This area has 356 elementary students that are currently attending Wells Elementary. This area used to attend Pope before Wells was ever built. But remember, Pope had all of Bridgeland. When Wells was built in 2017, geographically, we split Bridgeland in half. The kindergarteners at Wells in 2017 are now fourth graders at Wells. These students are eligible to stay if their parents provide transportation. All other students have not had a boundary change while attending Wells. With 356 students in this res code, it's hard to support moving them back to Pope or even keeping them at Wells. Okay? Around 20% of the comments referenced Pope's decreased enrollment compared to now with Wells enrollment steadily increasing. With our recommendation, Wells pre-K would attend Elementary 57 instead of Pope, causing a decrease in Pope's enrollment by about 66 kids as of today's count. And again, remember, there are already 45 above those projected, so decrease and increase. Wells enrollment is definitely increasing while the other two remain pretty steady. This is where the growth is. In 2024, we will be opening up Elementary 59 in Miramesa. While populating Elementary 59, the plan is also to provide relief to Wells. Around 20% of the comments referenced Bridge Creek area, south of Bridgeland Development. Currently, there are 38 students in this section. Moving 38 students to Elementary 57 is possible. However, with the uncertainty of the boundary lines for Elementary 59 in Miramesa across from Fry Road just two years after opening 57, the committee did not want to move this new development and then have to move it again in two years. And, and in 2024, there will be approximately a little greater than 165 students in that area that's in yellow that will need to be, you know, decided upon what we do when we open 59. Taking into account all pieces of data shared and the future opening of Elementary School 59 in 2024, the committee is asking for the board to accept our original proposal as the recommended attendance boundaries for Elementary 57 for the 2022-2023 school year. The area in yellow. With this recommendation, I have included the official verbiage for the board. Those three res codes. We call 138 Bridgeland Lakeland Bend because it's Lakeland Heights and First Bend, and then that two small sections of Parkland Village. Then Bridgeland East is the, the waterways, and then everything south of Bridgeland Creek Parkway. And then the apartments in the middle. Okay, just again, a reminder. Any elementary school student affected by this boundary change who will be in the fifth grade for the 2022-23 school year may remain at their current elementary school as a student, on a student transfer if their parents provide transportation. This opportunity does not, is not available for their younger siblings. Any questions?
Gilbert, go ahead.
The bilingual kids that are going to Andre, are they provided for transportation by us as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, with the influx of the areas, I mean, with astounding numbers, where, where are the middle schools that they're, they're going into?
All of Bridgeland right now currently goes to Smith.
And so where does the Ranch kids go to? What's the, what's the feeder pattern towards Ranch or Middle School?
Smith is, it goes, goes to Ranch.
As well?
And Anthony.
Well, we're opening a new middle school.
Yes.
And then we'll, we will open up Middle School Number 20 in the fall of '23.
That's what I was trying to get at. So, yeah. With these numbers, I was like, somewhere they gotta meet up there and stuff, so. Excellent. Just thank you for the information and good presentation.
Other questions on the side? Debbie?
Kristy, one of the things that I noticed, a common theme through a lot of the email input we received was that there was a group of students that would be driving right by the new elementary school to go to Wells, I believe. And in their mind, that doesn't make sense. And I guess it kind of puzzles me too. Would that be because we're trying to keep them from having to move again and, and when Number 59 opens?
That was mostly for the Bridge Creek. And you're, you're exactly right. And it was just the uncertainty of where we want to put those kids in, in two years. And we didn't want to move them twice. But yes, they will probably travel farther.
Has that been communicated to them? Why the zoning occurred like that was because we didn't, we're opening another elementary school in, in two more years and we didn't want them to have to move again? Because that also was one of the themes through the emails. Because my child's been moved twice or three times and, you know, unfortunately, a lot of times when people buy homes, the realtors tell them, you will go to Pope Elementary or you will go to Wells Elementary, not disclosing to them that with the tremendous growth of the district, that boundaries change. So people get upset when they buy homes located within a certain neighborhood for schools and then their child is moved to another one.
Exactly. We, we, tonight would be the first time we actually communicated why we didn't originally consider that for, for the committee. But as I explained, and again, it's, it may be a small amount of students right now, 38. But, and they can easily go to 57. But again, it's only going to grow in the next three years to 165, probably even more than that. And the uncertainty of what we want to do with the Miramesa 59, they could be moved twice, and that's, you know, not something we, we like to do either.
So what you're saying is the goal was not to have, to move them again, to put them in a school where they would be able?
Being at Wells now, then 57, then possibly, you know, who knows?
Right, right, okay, okay. Well, I think, I hope that people are listening or, or will communicate that because I think that's important, you know, for our stakeholders to understand why we're, we're making the boundaries as they are. And of course, we always want to follow the feeder, feeder patterns into the middle schools.
Other questions? Kristy, is it possible to go back and communicate with each of those individuals who sent in emails with that concern to explain what the rationale is?
We received two emails, and we responded personally to them. The, the community input is, is not sent to us with names. It's, it's confidential.
It's anonymous?
It is. It's, it's confidential. They have, I think they have IP addresses and dates, and it's, it's confidential, anonymous.
Very good, thank you. So is it the pleasure of the board to keep this on non-consent? Or do you want to move it to the consent agenda? I'll start on this way. Consent or non-consent? Consent? Consent? So this will be moved to the consent agenda. Ten C. The board will consider approving the campus improvement plans for the 2021-2022 school year. Presenters tonight, Dr. Linda Macias and Dr. Ashley Clayburn.
Good evening, President Jackson, board members, and Dr. Henry. Each year, we provide you with the improvement plan that each campus has developed to work, to improve performance for their students for that, that current year. Typically, this is a read-only item that we provide you. We do this every single year for you. But this year, with three new board members, we wanted to just give you an overview of the process that we follow or that our campuses follow when they are preparing and developing their campus improvement plans or their, yeah, their campus improvement plans. So Dr. Clayburn will walk us through a short presentation to share with you the process that's followed.
Campus improvement planning is designed as a cycle with the Campus Performance Objectives Council, also known as CPAC, at the center of the process. BQB Local requires that the CPAC include the following members: the campus principal, eight teachers, four non-teaching professionals, one district-level professional staff member, and at least two parents, two community members, and two business representatives. At the beginning of each school year, the CPAC conducts a data analysis to review prior year student performance and a root cause analysis to determine specific areas of need. Then the team sets the performance objectives and targets and determines strategies to be used to meet campus goals. During the school year, the CPAC meets a minimum of four times to consider various issues related to student achievement. While each campus uses the same planning process, the product, also known as the Campus Improvement Plan, or CIP, is unique to each campus. For instance, each campus reviews their data and sets targets for each content area, grade level, and student group for the approaches, meets, and masters STAR performance levels. These targets are based on incremental growth from the prior year. In June, STAR data are returned to districts and placed in the data tables for evaluation. Additionally, each campus is responsible for meeting state and federal accountability targets and for meeting the board's goal of all campuses earning an overall scaled score of 80% or higher as their state accountability rating. Furthermore, each campus writes one or more performance objectives for each of the four CIP goals: academic achievement, safe and healthy learning environment, human capital, and family and community engagement. These performance objectives are considered milestones on the path to achieving the goals. Each performance, performance objective is written in what is known as a SMART format. They are specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound. Campuses determine specific improvement strategies to implement each year in their quest to meet their performance. quest to meet their performance objectives. As you reviewed the CIPs in your board packet, you may have wondered, is there just one strategy for reading, one strategy for writing, et cetera? The answer to that question is no. We have an entire set of district standard expectations and campus-level standard expectations. These outline the expectations we have for all our campuses, and they are included as addendums in each campus improvement plan. We consider our campus improvement plans as living documents. As the CPAC meets throughout the school year, they evaluate the strategies in November, February, and May. Additionally, they evaluate new data sets as they become available throughout the year. The CIP is adjusted based on their data analysis. Upon board approval, the CIPs will be posted on the district website. To access them, simply open cfisd.net, click on "Our District," then click on "School Ratings." On the School Ratings page, select the campus level, select the campus of your choice along with the school year, then click on Campus Improvement Plan to open the document. This concludes our brief presentation for this evening. At this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Board questions, I'll move to the left this time. Ms. Heinrichman.
Thank you. Thank you for the information, for the overview. Having served on multiple CPAC committees, I'm familiar with the process. I know that the principals put a lot of time and work into gathering all this data and creating these plans that can help guide their work on each individual campus. So I appreciate the efforts made by our principals and their teams on their campuses.
Thank you.
And to the right. Dr. Blasky, okay?
Well, the schools, I know much work goes into campus improvement planning and using the data, and especially in a year after the pandemic. I do have a question, questions into the content just around some of the goal two, around safe and healthy learning environment. So those are some that I can raise with administration.
Okay.
Just looking, for example, in strategies around reducing suspensions and calling that out with student, particular student groups in mind.
Okay.
I have concerns there.
Other questions? I will make one point in taking a look at these. Some of our campuses with wonderful opportunities, the targets seem very aggressive, and I love aggressive targets, but I worry that they are unrealistic in the setting of goals. They have to be those that are within our grasp and not beyond our reach. And we have a tradition of not mentioning schools specifically, but I'll follow up on that offline.
Okay.
But there's a couple of them that just jump out and say, "That's a tremendous amount of growth, and do we have the resources to make that happen?" So thank you. Tremendous amount of work, thanks to the principals who put in all the work and effort on this, as well as the others. I know it's not just a one-person job.
Right, the principal and their CPAC.
Do we want to move this to consensus or leave it on non-consensus? Consensus. This will be moved to consensus. 10D, the board will consider approving the shared service arrangement between Cypress Fairbanks ISD and KPH Consolidation, Inc., doing business as HCA Houston Healthcare of North Cypress. Do we have a presentation or only if there's questions?
Only questions, sir.
Questions to the right? None to the left? Move this to consensus then with no questions? This is now moved to consensus. The board will consider approving the list that we've been furnished of facilities for off-campus physical education, Category 1 for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions only?
If, if you may permit me, please, Mr. Jackson?
Please.
I'd like to give just a quick, very short overview because this is not another agenda item that we always bring to the board, twice a year actually, typically in June and then now, twice a year for you to review and to approve. And so I just wanted to give just a quick overview so that you know what we're doing with this. So this is, this pertains to off-campus PE, and TA allows us to provide an off-campus PE opportunity. The board has approved a policy which we have in place, EHAC Local, which kind of walks us through the criteria for off-campus PE. And then we have to submit what you approve to TA twice a year. And then this involves high-level training in a sport. So if you think, if you can think in terms of, this is above, pretty much way above, what peers are able to participate in as far as a sport. Oh, yes, I do have a PowerPoint, don't I, Teresa? Thank you. Although, do I have a clicker?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Maybe Joel can...
Yeah, Joel, can you? Yeah, thank you. There we go. Thank you, Joel. Joel, you can advantage me. Thank you. And one more, one more, please. Oh, you did that, Roy? Thank you, Roy.
Here, I'll be your clicker.
So click, Marnie, please. So just real quick, what we provide is what's called a Category 1 opportunity, so that's at Olympic-type level competition. And our students who submit their application to, for off-campus PE have to perform at least 15 hours in this training setting. And the, all of the facilities are evaluated because they have to be high-level, high-quality type facilities. And then, as you see there, our students have to make sure that they're engaging. And then if they choose to participate, they can choose to miss a class, but it's a PE-type class, and it's only that one class. So just a quick overview about off-campus PE because from here on on, unless you ask differently, we'll just submit it as a read-only type agenda item. If there's any questions I may answer, I'd be happy to.
Questions on this side, to the left. Linda, if you would, we require more of these students than normal PE. You said they're giving up just one class, but isn't it more than that?
Well, there, it's 15 hours a week that they are, they're actually participating in, in their Olympic caliber type event.
And they're still required to take all their other normal classes?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board. Move it to consent? Consent. It is now moved to consent. 10F, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. And I am going to read the nine items. These are 10F dot 1 all the way down to dot 9 as a group, and then I will ask for questions for any of these. These are: one, automotive chemicals, parts and supplies; two, central packaging for nutrition services; three, cleaning supplies for nutrition services; four, CTE vocational lab supplies, equipment, and housewares; five, electric service bucket and lift truck service; six, fine arts supplies and equipment; seven, musical instrument repair; eight, point-of-sale system request for proposal; nine, small wares for nutrition services. I'll start to the left. Questions? To the right. Hearing no questions, I will ask, may we move this to consent? It has been moved to the consent agenda. 10G, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractor and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contract. We have a brief presentation. The presenter is Matt Morgan.
President Jackson, Dr. Henry, members of the board, we bring this agenda item to you tonight to get approval for completion of the 2019 bond work on the food production center. If you're not familiar with our food production center, since the 1980s, early 1980s, we've operated a centralized production facility. Our child nutrition department produces about 20 million meals a year, and many of the items that the children have on the menu are made from scratch at this facility. If you get a chance to tour it, I highly recommend you go tour it. It's a very impressive operation. With this bond project, we're going to be replacing the cold storage and freezer assemblies in the production center and also the freezer. We'll also be replacing the ice builder and large kettles for the cook-chill system. We'll be replacing the flour dispensing system for the bakery and renovating the restrooms and some of the production floor offices, and we'll also be replacing the overhead doors on the delivery bays and replacing, or painting and replacing finishes throughout the facilities. In anticipation of your question, Mr. President, this facility is not located in a floodplain, and we've never experienced any flooding.
How would you know that?
So I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions on the right side? And to the left? So Matt, a question I have for you. Why do we need to do this?
It is very efficient to operate a central production facility. It's helped us to accommodate the growth of the district. We used to have central production, well, production facilities dispersed throughout the district. I believe Jersey Village was a central kitchen, Side Creek was a central kitchen, Lampkin was a central kitchen. In the 1980s, they consolidated into this production facility. It creates tremendous economies of scale, saves costs. Our food, our child nutrition program is self-funded. It's allowed it to maintain its fund balance and stay self-funded. It's just incredibly efficient.
Have we ever been identified as this being best practices or as a model facility?
We have been identified throughout the years, for decades, as a model facility. We've hosted tours, international tours, national tours, local tours, to come see how we operate our facility.
Speaking of tours, I have toured this facility, and in so doing, actually sampled some of the food that was being made. And I was surprised at how tasty it was. I may be, you know, maybe there may, there may be one other board member who's toured. I don't know. But would the new board members like to have a tour arranged to this facility?
The cinnamon rolls, get a cinnamon roll.
Get the mac and cheese.
Somebody obviously took note of what I sampled.
You want me back to Roy? I'm not going to sell.
Good. So we'll go ahead and arrange that sometime in the new year?
I recommend you do it fairly soon. We're going to start construction pretty soon. So you might want to see it before we start tearing the coolers. Actually, next semester should be fine. If you'll contact Darren Crawford, our fantastic child nutrition director, he'll take you on a tour. He does a fantastic job.
And we'll work through Holly, and she'll take care of all the details for us.
Yes, sir.
Much easier. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
May we move this to the consent agenda? This is now moved to the consent agenda. 10H, the board will consider approving the sale of the property previously declared as surplus located on Winfern Road near Campbell Middle School to SciHope and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms of the sale and execute all contracts and related documents for closing. Do we have a presentation tonight, Roy?
Yeah, I have a very short one.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Henry, we took bids on this property in November. Back in June of 2021, the board agreed to declare this approximate six to seven acre tract as surplus. And since then, we advertised the bid package for the sale as were required by law. We advertised in the newspaper, and it was also posted on our website. We did receive one bid. The bid is in the amount of $250,000, which is above our appraised value for the property, so it is a good value for the district, and therefore, we'd recommend y'all move forward with approving this recommendation.
Questions on this item to the left? None to the right? So Roy, I have a question for you. This looks like a term of art in here where it says, "Declared as surplus." What does that mean?
Basically, per our current local policy, any surplus property that we don't deem that is necessary for any future development in the district, we would present that to the school board for approval. And then once the board declares it as surplus, then we would move forward with potential sale of the property.
So what happened is a recommendation came forth from management that this was surplus. That information was presented to the board as to the reasons why it would be surplus, and the board had an opportunity to ask whether or not we needed to keep it.
That's correct.
And then the board decided that it was surplus, but merely defining it as surplus doesn't mean we sell it.
That's correct.
Very good. So with that, may we move that to consent agenda?
Mr. Jackson, I would ask that it be placed on the agenda. I serve on the board, I'm directors of SciHope, so I need to be shunned as abstaining from voting.
Absolutely. So this will need to be on the non-consent agenda. This is relatively standard operating procedure. Whenever a board member has to abstain from voting, we do not want to mix it with the consent agenda. And also, thank you for doing that. So whenever we have a conflict of interest, and these will pop up from time to time, we want to verbally acknowledge that. And of course, what happens is when you have a conflict, you'll reach out to council and say, before the board meeting, "I have a conflict on this item." So that it's conveyed to Holly, it pops up into the script, but still, the board member who has a conflict, they have to move on it. Merely because we know there's a conflict doesn't mean we can take action. It's the board member has to say, "I have a conflict," and we move on it. So this item will be on non-consent. Thank you, Debbie. The superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, December 13, 2021. I want to thank everybody for coming in person tonight, also viewing at home. I want to officially congratulate, as board president, our three new board members. I look forward to working with you three, our existing other three board members, and our superintendent, as we carve a new path going forth. And with that, we are adjourned for the evening. Good night.